And welcome to the September 13th Longview City Council meeting. Tonight our Purim pledge will be led by Reverend Diana Castile of St. Mark's Christian Methodist Episcopal Church. Would you please stand?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we come today thanking you for all the many blessings you have bestowed upon each and every one of us. Now, Lord, we pray for your divine protection for the city council members, their families, and for all the city officials who make up this body. Lord, we ask that you would guide them with wisdom, guide them with knowledge, and guide them with the understanding as they prepare to take steps and make decisions to make Gray County a better county. We realize, God, that the job that is at hand is not always an easy one. And so that's why, Lord, we pray for their strength, for this team. We pray for them mentally, emotionally, and physically. We pray that everything they say, everything that is done on this day is pleasing before you. It is in the matchless name of Jesus that we pray and we ask it all. Amen.
Would you please join in a pledge of allegiance? Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend, it's good to see you again.
You too.
She's had the extreme pleasure of mentoring and working with several of our council members, former council member, Ms. Sidney Bell Willis, who we lost recently, and now Ms. Cassia Williams. So continue doing the great job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for being here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Citizen comment. We're gonna start Ms. Kelly Hightamp. Kelly, come on up.
No, I've asked to go before the agenda on the animal issue.
No ma'am, this is time we do citizen comments, so if you're gonna speak tonight, now's the time.
Well, I was told, Mayor.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but citizen comment is now, and if you want to speak, now's the time to speak.
So you're not having the six minutes during the agenda?
You can have, I think, six, you can have your six minutes, but now is the time that you speak.
Okay.
We're not gonna cheat out of your minutes, Kelly.
I just thought there was a certain time that you wanted to have me speak.
I know, I know. We're not gonna munch into your minutes, I promise.
Thank you. All right, thank everyone who the council knows. Good evening. Why I'm here, I'm very disturbed. I've been told by the mayor, when I spoke to him two weeks ago, I asked him if he wanted to speak with the forensic accountant that had had an opportunity to sit down and look in detail at the operating account for the shelter, the Austin Bank operating account. I told the mayor that there were some very disturbing things in there that we had discovered, and I'd like to sit down and talk, and the mayor told me I don't care.
I said I did not want to talk to you.
He told me you did not care.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
And you told me you didn't have any interest in sitting down with a forensic accountant. And I couldn't understand that, and I was really disappointed because I've spoken to you about this lawsuit now for a couple of years, long before I even filed it. And we always discussed that once these records were revealed, we would all sit down and discuss it. It's been a year of trying to get these records. It's been a long, tiring, reckless, strainful year to get something that we should have been provided immediately. So "I don't care" was a devastating thing to hear, because I can't imagine that you don't care. I think you gotta care. I know the taxpayers care, because it's tax dollars that we're talking about. Specifically, let's talk about the things that we did find, and there are volumes of things that we found, and I can't go through them at all in detail. But the forensic accountant is here this afternoon, this evening, and I'm certain he would make himself available to sit down with all of you when you have some time to go through everything that we found, because I think you should know, if we're gonna give them any more money, if we're gonna extend any kind of contract, I think not only should you want to know, you have an obligation to know, because you're spending money on these things. And the fact that it took them 12 months to give me the bank statements screams volumes. One of the things we found is that a board member had been paid forty-four, almost forty-five thousand dollars in 11 months. Now, they say, well, she was employed. She resigned when she was serving as the interim director, and then she was paid a salary. And based on the bank statements, that's very obvious, when she started receiving a salary, she received close to thirty-five thousand dollars in money from the shelter before then. And there's no explanation. There's absolutely zero explanation. Board members are not to be compensated. We have bank statements, we have check after check, and I have them here today for you to look through. Of that specific incident, then there's the Austin Bank account itself, a hundred and eight thousand dollars in checks written in just over a year and a half, a hundred and eight thousand dollars in checks that they drew on the Austin Bank account. So if you have an operating account, and you go in there, and you cut a check to your own bank, the only understanding that I have of that is you're cashing it out. So in that short period of time, we're talking about a hundred and eight thousand dollars that's completely unexplained. Now, I suspect they can explain some of it, and I welcome that opportunity. I would love to sit down with the folks that were making these decisions, specifically the people who signed these checks, Lee Pidgen, Barbara Fairbanks, Teresa Meshky, Rhonda Spittler, these people sign the checks. I welcome an opportunity to sit down and see what evidence they have that can support these kinds of checks. The other things in the account make sense. You see where they're paying veterinary costs, you see where they're buying food, you see these things. So after looking through this hours and hours and speaking with a forensic accountant, we still have no explanation for a hundred and eight thousand dollars from Austin Bank. Then there's the United Healthcare. In just under two years, they spent forty-nine thousand dollars on health insurance. Now, this makes sense if you're insuring all your employees, but I've spoken with employees, current employees, past employees, and they routinely tell me that they couldn't afford to have it taken out of their check each week. They couldn't afford fifty-five dollars a month. Oh, I'm sorry, not a month, a paycheck. So they opted out. Most of the employees that I've worked with are single mothers, or they're very young individuals making about nine dollars an hour. They can't opt for health insurance. I know of two employees that regularly had insurance, but I don't think, based on the figures that they provided, that comes to forty-nine thousand dollars a year. I'd like to know who was insured. We're entitled to know, how could they spend that kind of money in that short period of time? They have to justify that. It would be easy. You just produce the policies for that period of time and show us. There's close to two-hundred thousand dollars in a year and a half that is unexplained. I want answers. Don't you want answers? These are tax dollars that we're talking about. These are checks from a main operating account. And there's no explanation still offered today. After a year of ridiculous effort in getting this account, now we have the evidence that there's been money going out of these accounts like wildfire, but still, no justifiable explanation. The burden's on them to explain how they've been spending the money. The burden's not on me to continue to investigate, or the five plaintiffs that had the courage to stand up and file a lawsuit when the city and the county would not ask the questions. This council has the right to ask those questions. This council has the right to demand access to the bank statements and demand the answers, but nobody's doing that, and I don't know why. Is it easier to put your head in the sand and say, it's just easier to give them the money? That breaks my heart. Even if you don't care about animals, certainly care about how the tax dollars are spent. We've had a contractor with the city of Longview that's been under investigation for at least three years, with a lawsuit pending for one year. And this contractor has the audacity to come before this council and not only say, we want more money, but we want 25% increase in one year? The past few years, they go up every year. I'm told that there's no viable alternative to paying them two-hundred and three thousand dollars plus ten thousand five hundred in services that they don't have to pay for. Again, we're paying for them as taxpayers. There's no alternative? I think the alternative is simply continue the contract on a 30-day period.
Ms. Hightamp, time's up, we appreciate it.
Six minutes?
Is it six minutes? We keep it on time? Thank you. Okay, I have Mr. Nick Burkett.
Kelly stole a little bit of my thunder, I apologize for that. So I'll try not to bore you with the redundancy. My name is Nick Burkett, I'm a CPA and certified fraud examiner among other things.
Could you speak up?
Sure. It's a fancy word for it is a forensic accountant. So basically, I make a living doing complex data analysis and financial analysis. In this case, I've helped with the lawsuit that Ms. Hightamp's talked about with document production and the reviewing the financial condition and the specific bank activity that she's spoken of. And everything she said is true, we did find that. I'm also, I should mention, I'm a board member and treasurer for a nonprofit in Tyler named St. Paul's Children Foundation. So I feel like I know a little bit about the nonprofit world as well. A lot of these things that I saw would concern me as a treasurer if that were going on in my charity. Some of these, like Kelly said, probably do have some plausible explanations, but we've been going through this process for over a year, and it would concern me if I was the council person to, that there's been no attempt to explain some of this stuff. One thing I wanted to do, in addition to the specific transactions that Ms. Hightamp's already talked about, I wanted to try to pull back a little bit and talk to you about the other concerns that I've seen. The shelter has several risk factors that would concern me as well. They've run through three or four or five executive directors in the last four years with that person that's supposed to be running the shelter. That's a significant risk factor. In addition, they've got a transient, pretty transient employment force, which is also a risk factor for fraud and fraud prevention. There's some evidence in the things that we've seen that the cash, the internal controls over cash are not very good. There are accounting discrepancies that are unexplained, as I stand here today. But I think the bigger picture is that I'd like to get across to the council, is that this charity has been in business since 1980, 1981. So that's 30 years, 32 years. They basically have a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars set aside for a quote-unquote "building fund" over 30 years. Now, you guys are all intelligent, you could do the math. That's not very much to speak of for 30 years. The financial condition over the last four years that we've looked at, they're treading water at best. In the most recent fiscal year that ended September 30th, 2011, they reported a hundred thousand dollar loss. The three years before that, it was basically break even or worse. I understand there's a motion for a renewal of the contract. I'm just telling you my professional opinion, with whatever you guys decide to do with that, it's a Band-Aid, it's not a solution. Throwing another fifty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars a year at this entity is not gonna fix the problem. The board and their staff are not doing a good job doing fundraising, in my opinion. In the last fiscal year, they raised approximately seventy thousand dollars, according to their tax filing. It cost them thirty to thirty-five thousand to raise that money. That's horrible results. It should be 10 to 1, in my experience. There are East Texas charities out there, they're in the same economic downturn, that are raising a million dollars a year at less expense. So it tells me that the board is stagnant, it tells me that they are not connecting with the community, and it tells me that you guys are gonna have a problem at some point. That facility is dilapidated, they have no borrowing base to go borrow money, should they have to make major improvements? Whether you fix it now or fix it later, it's something that's gonna be at your feet at some point, in my personal opinion, unless the private citizens step up and raise their own money. So that's effectively all I have to say, other than I'll be more than glad to speak to any of you guys in more detail, if you'd like. Ms. Hightamp has my contact information, and be glad to talk to you about all of our findings in detail at any time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Hall Griffin.
Thank you, Mayor Dean. I guess by way of disclosure, I need to stand and tell you who I am tonight. I'm a member of J. Dean's task force, or the city's task force on this animal committee, and I'm early enough involved in this that I don't know all the bad history. I don't know all the she said, she says, he did, this thing, but obviously, things aren't good. You didn't have to be told that tonight by experts. So from the standpoint of the city task force, I don't want to speak for them, because we've only had one meeting, but I can tell you, I think you've got a very good group, you've got input from gentlemen here. There's lots of wounds to heal. I don't think that group can heal all of them, but I do believe that task force has enough good people on it, enough support of the community behind them, that they will accomplish something. So I'm gonna do my best to bury how many hatchets I can. I don't have any at this point. I'm sure I'll probably get some, but I would like to switch gears and talk to you from an individual standpoint tonight, and make sure this doesn't represent anything from the committee basis. We've just heard some problems with the Humane Society, and I think you're aware of them. I understand there's a two-year deadline, Longview's paying a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, and my numbers are, you know, quick pencil in. I'm coming up with forty-two, forty-one dollars, round numbers, an animal. I don't know if any of you board animals on the weekend, or have people take care of your pets while you're gone, but that's chump change. And, you know, so is it the fact that the Humane Society charges too much that they're in trouble, or too little, or they don't manage? I don't know, but I can tell you, anyone that can take care of a pet or an animal for forty-one dollars, round numbers, is doing pretty good. They're doing something. And they may be, there may be a reason why there is no competition, okay? Lots of people saying it ought to be done different. I have yet to seen anybody stand up and do anything different. I think that's where this task force is going. I would hope that in a year or two, there is something different, and is something much better. In the interim, my other round figures come up with the fact that in 2011, this Humane Society returned 495 pets to owners, lost pets. When we bought the home we're in in Longview now, we chose it because it had a big board fence, and we had lots of room for animals. I like to think I'm a responsible pet owner, but they've gotten out on three occasions. Those three occasions, fortunately, I've got tagged numbers, a neighbor or somebody caught them and gathered them up and called me. But 2012, year-to-date, about 341. So I'm looking at last 20 months, 836 pets returned to owners, 2,928 adopted, so I'm looking at a 3,764 animals saved. And, you know, going forward, I think we see need for a change. I think we see need for improvement, but when we sit up here and talk about all the negatives, we don't look at 836 pets returned to their owners. If this Humane Society disappears tomorrow, things are going from bad to worse. They're going from ugly to real ugly. And I think there's plenty of people in this town who would like to see this Humane Society go out tomorrow. I would like to take a different approach and try to pull them up and help them in the interim until we have a better recommendation to come forward to the council. At this point, I see not much option. In my mind, a vote not to renegotiate this contract is a vote to destroy 3,764 animals in the next 24 months, 20 months. So as an individual and not a task force member, I would encourage you to do what you can to accomplish things now, and then keep us going in the right direction to have a better long-term solution. Thank you.
Thanks, Hall. Casey Fluhardy.
Thank you, Mayor Dean. Good evening, council. My name is Casey Fluhardy, and for years, I kinda turned my nose up at the situation at the shelter. It just broke my heart to see, you know, the pictures. And then I finally decided that if I wanted to complain about it, then I needed to step up and help and do something about it. While we understand that it's the irresponsibility of pet owners who've brought us to this situation, obviously, we can't focus on that anymore. We have to move forward. I'm here to talk more about the human side of things as opposed to the political. Two weeks ago, I started my final semester at Stephen F. Austin State University for my social work degree. It'll be my fourth college degree. Social work teaches us to always advocate for those who do not have a voice. They may have a bark or a meow, but they don't have a coherent vocabulary to choose from. This is no different. As said before, Longview is a wonderful city. I love Longview, and I am proud to have roots here. However, as I approached my final stages of my last degree and began to think about starting a family, I questioned whether or not I want to raise my children in a city that allows these types of things to be swept under the rug. We have a right to know where our tax dollars are going. We are not just a group of fanatical, crazy cat and dog ladies who have nothing else better to do. Believe me, we all work, some of us work and go to school, a lot of us have families. We're a concerned group of citizens, as stated before, being proactive in our community. I don't think you, as the council of Longview, would have it any other way than to have citizens stand up and be proactive. My closing thought is this: Put yourselves in our positions. What are you passionate about? Maybe not pets, but maybe something else. If it came down to it, would you advocate just as hard as we are? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And I hope this degree is the one. Okay. Alicia Nolte.
Hello, gentlemen and ladies. Thank you, councilmen. My name is Alicia Nolte, and I am the founder of Fet for Pets. That, three years ago, it was formed a nonprofit organization to raise money here in the city for strictly a new animal center for our area and surrounding counties. And I would like to thank everyone for always giving us the opportunity, and I am chosen to be on the task force. What we've, and what I wanted to say is that our fundraisers and our board and the people that have volunteered is, we've been chosen to reach out to others and get solutions from other cities that have accomplished and that are lowering the euthanasia rate. And they are succeeding, and they are making money. So I just ask you tonight to open your hearts and your minds, and let's encompass one another. It's not pointing fingers at someone. I think it's time that our city steps up and we go forward with new ideas and step outside the box. A wise man once said, "A nation will be judged by its treatment of animals." And I believe in this city, and I believe in all of you, and I know that you'll make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Chris Edgeworth.
Hello. My name is Chris Edgeworth. I'm here as a resident to urge the council to, at a minimum, defer any decision associated with the shelter contract until after the task force does its job. I think the task force will come to the right conclusion that a new animal shelter is the only way forward for the city of Longview. Any long-term promise of money to the shelter is a waste of taxpayer dollars. As Kelly and Nick pointed out, there are issues. And it's disturbing that council members aren't interested in looking at the results of this long process of obtaining records, financial records. And I'm happy to yield my time to anybody who's willing to answer this. But I'm gonna preface my question with, the audit performed by the city couldn't have included any of these documents, because it took so long for, I was a plaintiff in the suit, it took so long for us to obtain these financial records that it couldn't have been a complete audit that was presented to the city. So whoever's willing to answer this question, is it true now that you do not want to see the results of these before, the result of this before voting on increasing funds or continuing funds?
I'll address that directly, sir. Did you have anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Gwen Aiken.
Good evening, Jay, and committee members. I just wanted to come back and be on record to say that I am a little disappointed that you didn't get back to me with my request to be on the committee, because I was very passionate to work with those who are on, to be a part of the solution. I've got some really great ideas, and during the time that I was the vice president on the board from approximately June through the end of September last year, I was doing a lot of research and spent quite a bit of time down there at the shelter. And one of the biggest things that I discovered was there was definitely a lack of leadership there for the employees. I can't say enough good about the employee, the shelter workers down there, because they're the best, they should be paid a lot more than they get, but I saw a definite lack of leadership down there that was causing a lot of problems. Things just weren't flowing like they could've. I wanted to take the three weeks' time that I was down there and offer my observations back at the next board meeting, but I was told at the time by the president that I was not gonna be allowed to share any of that information. And when I, you know, pressed her on, she said, "You haven't been here long enough to earn that right to share that information." So I told her at that time that I wasn't gonna play politics, and I would step away and try to find some other means to help the shelter. I do want to let you know, Jay, and I hope that I have the opportunity in the future to share some information with the committee, because I'm working with a developer who, once I get some more information to them, I feel I have a great solution for a building that is a prefab building that could be delivered in four pieces. I'm looking roughly at about 10,000-square-foot building, roughly about 120 square, and that includes delivering. The people who are behind this and the developers are well-established, and they also have had run shelters, and they do everything from office buildings, hospitals. So I think it would be a sound building, and I know that it would come in considerably less than any other previous bids you've had. And I just also would like to have the opportunity to share some of the other great ideas I have. Even if I can't be a part of the committee, I still want to be able to be a part of the solution. And lastly, I'd just like to go on record and say that, you know, if it comes to be, I would be willing to step up and take on a leadership role with a new shelter. And I know in my communications with people during the time I was on the board in and around Gray County and the city of Longview, with just rescues and private citizens, there's a lot of people out there that are willing to roll their sleeves up and volunteer their time to help a new building and a new facility run smoothly with just a minimum of employees. So I just want to go on record to say that I'm still looking forward to hopefully have an opportunity to be a part of the solution and work with whatever group I can.
Let me ask you a question. You just returned from vacation for several weeks or more.
Wasn't a vacation, it was a family matter, yeah.
Okay, but you were out of town, and you did get my phone call, because you did talk to Judge Stout, you called him as well, and said that you, you know, that you did get a call from me, but you'd been out of town.
No, I don't.
And I've got records that I did call you, Gwen.
I don't recall receiving prior to.
Well, you spoke to Judge Stout just recently, and I did attempt to call you. You did not return my call, because you were out of town, but that's okay. There's an opportunity for everybody to participate. We've got 11 members, but you can participate, okay? Both meetings have had a number of other citizens that have been there, so not a problem, okay?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Clancy Cox.
Hi there. I'm Clancy with the Good Dog Academy. I'm an animal behaviorist and trainer and instructor, also former director of operations with the Humane Society of Northeast Texas for three years. I wanted to start with a few questions, although I feel like you're unlikely to answer these, but I would like to question how the future new shelter will remain afloat as a public-private partnership.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. Is the city expecting the nonprofit fundraising efforts to support the yearly cost of the operating for this facility, or are our tax dollars gonna supply this expense?
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Without the numerous contract fees from the other cities and counties, how is this gonna work? I'm hoping you're gonna address that later with item 9.
I'll address this right now.
Okay.
We've heard a lot of things tonight, okay? Heard them for a long time, three years or more, okay? And the reason that we have put together this task force is to address all these questions, okay? So that at the end... So that at the end of the day, we've got a good, long-term solution that's good for the animals, okay? And is good for the taxpayer, okay? At the end of the day. So, did you have anything else?
I sure do.
Go ahead.
I also would like to just set a few things straight about the statistics, the numbers that have been thrown around tonight and in previous meetings, how these animals are leaving the animal shelter. Things are doing so much better now at the Humane Society of Northeast Texas. These adoptions mean nothing without adoption applications. We need to know where these animals are going. Are they cared for well or not? If you can just walk to the shelter and pay money and bring a dog out the door, we're not bettering the life of that animal, not one bit. These animals that are flying out to rescues in, you know, in the hundreds, 10 or 20 a week at least, going to rescue groups that are not reliable. These rescue groups have no referrals and no references. We have no idea if we are just repopulating the rest of the country. We're shipping these animals, animals out across the U.S. I think that's something that needs to be looked at. The numbers don't mean everything unless you understand how it's ran from the inside. Lastly, I definitely needed to say that if the city decides to contract with the Humane Society of Northeast Texas, it should continue only on a month-to-month basis with the current contract. There is no rational explanation to justify an increase of funding for this new contract, not whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I send the speaker cards. Let me, I promise I wasn't going to say anything and I'm gonna be, thanks to some really good guidance, but I think it's important to clarify just one bit of misinformation regarding the first speaker, and I saying that I, I don't care. What I said was that there is a lawsuit that Ms. Highcamp has been involved with for a long time. She offered to sit down with me and her forensic accountant to review all she had found. And I said that, you know, at this point in time, you know, I don't really care about sitting down with you and your forensic accountant, okay? Because I know what we have to do and we have to move forward with this task force and come up with a long-term, permanent solution. And also, we get a third-party audit as part of our contract we've asked for. Do they go in and are they searching for any criminal activity and all kind of stuff like has been pointed out? Our, our finance people, our attorneys, our, our legal departments review these documents and they come back to the city council and advise us, okay? And if they find anything, because it is taxpayer dollars, they come back to us with that. And we haven't had that. So I want to make it clear, I do care. But I don't get, I don't care to get caught up in Ms. Highcamp's long-term lawsuit. Now she's going towards a criminal lawsuit. And I, I just, I just don't feel like being part of all that. I want to stay focused on the solution, okay? Which is a long-term solution for the animals. Okay. We're gonna go to presentation items. Presentation of a proclamation, texting and driving, it can wait. Okay. Thank y'all for coming tonight. Texting and driving, it can wait. September 19th, 2012. Public safety, including the reduction of fatalities and injuries resulting from motor vehicle accidents, are goals shared by the city of Longview and the state of Texas. The National Highway Traffic Safety Administration and the Virginia Tech Transportation Institute estimate that nearly 80% of crashes involve some form of driver inattention. Driver distraction is a factor in approximately 4.78 million crashes resulting in 2 million injuries, more than 34,000 fatalities, and as much as $184 billion in economic damages annually. AT&amp;T has launched a campaign to raise public awareness about the risks of texting and driving and remind all wireless consumers, especially our youth, that text messages can and should wait until after driving. So therefore, I, Jay Dean, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Longview, hereby proclaim September 19th, 2012, as the day for texting and driving, it can wait And in, in cooperation with AT&amp;T, Don't Text and Drive Campaign, It Can Wait, Longview Independent School District and the city of Longview will be holding a joint press conference centered around the dangers of texting and driving. The press conference will be Wednesday, September 19th at 1:00 p.m. Longview High School in the atrium area of the Mickey Melton Facility. We want to invite the public to please come out. I, I think as a parent, it's important, you know, for us to talk to our children and whatnot. You see it all the time. You read about it, you find, you hear about the accidents, kid wasn't paying attention. I have to admit, I have been guilty and, and it's not a good thing to be doing, okay? So let's support this drive and let's, let's do it for our children. And please be, be at the Longview Independent School District, Wednesday, September 19th, 1:00 p.m., at the high school in the atrium area of the Mickey Melton Facility. Okay. Let's see what else we've got up here. Oh. What is this? Laura Hill. Laura. Come see Laura. What's your name doing on this?
I think I'm in trouble.
No, never. Come up here to this dais.
You got it right.
I'm in trouble?
No. Okay. This is a presentation of a 25-year service pin to Laura Hill, Director of Community Services. Laura Hill is receiving a service pin in recognition of 25 years of service. Laura served as Director of Community Service since 2002, ably leading a staff of 130 people, serving in such great areas as parks and recreation, as long as they're not busting up all of our equipment, right? Okay. Maude Cobb Activity Center, the Housing and Community Development and Partners in Prevention. Her career with the city of Longview began as a part-time lifeguard. Really? Wow. Ultimately leading to a full-time position as Recreation Coordinator in 1987. She also served as Recreation Manager, Operations and Maintenance Manager, and Assistant Director of Community Services prior to her current position. Laura also has served the community as a member of various boards and service organizations such as the National Recreation and Parks Association, the American Red Cross, Globe Board Directors, ETC, Solid Waste Advisory Committee, and the Longview Grecian Rotary Club. Laura's an invaluable member of the city of Longview leadership team. Her wealth of knowledge and can-do attitude make her an outstanding example to all and will look forward to many more years of dedication and service from Ms. Laura Hill. And we have a nice little pendant here for you, for your 25 years. See that, that little green thing down there? It's really a diamond, so don't.
Really?
Yeah, you gotta look at it. You gotta look kind of hard, but it's down there. It's in there, I promise.
Okay.
Okay. So here's your pin. And hey, the can-do deal is right. Anytime you call Laura, forget about it, it's done. Thank you. Thank you for your job. Thank you for your job. Consent agenda. Counsel, any items to pull for separate consideration? If not, may I have a motion?
So, mo.
Have a motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Zoning items, public hearing to consider application Z12-10. Mr. Michael Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor Dean. Excuse me. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately 20 acres, part of the abstract 360 of the Alexander Jordan survey. This is from single-family SF4 two-light industrial located west of FRJ Drive. As you can see, this is an area it's adjacent part of and the East Industrial District. It is consistent with the land use map that designates this for industrial. Planning and zoning commission and staff do recommend approval and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Question to Mr. Shirley. This item requires a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. I have one speaker card from Robert Dugan. Robert, did you want to speak? Are you here for questions?
Uh, just, any questions?
Okay. Any questions to Mr. Dugan? Is anyone else here that'd like to speak to this matter that maybe didn't get to fill out a speaker card? Okay. They're not being so, the public hearing is closed. Counsel, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Budget items, considering ordinance adopting the 2012 tax rate and levying said rate. Angela Condon.
Good evening. This is an ordinance to adopt the 2012 tax rate. The proposed tax rate is 50.09 cents per 100 evaluation. This ordinance is for your consideration of approval.
Questions? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to, I move that the tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 50.09 cents per $100 valuation, which is effectively a 0.76% increase in the tax rate.
Okay. There's a motion?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Gary. Done very professionally over there. Okay. Action item. Action item, consider a resolution approving and authorize the city manager or the city manager designate to renew a contract for animal shelter services. Mr. Cummings.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members.
Item before you is the contract renewal with the Humane Society of Northeast Texas. We've heard quite a bit of conversation about that this evening. This contract is similar to contracts that we have issued with the Humane Society in previous years, although there is a significant cost increase of about 23%. They're asking for $203,125. This contract also has a difference from other years in that it has a renewal clause at the end of it. In 12 months, both parties would like to extend the contract. It can be done, but it has to be considered by both parties separately. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
What, I, I know Hall had some numbers, cost per animal, but my understanding is, I know three years ago, when we negotiated, renegotiated the contract, since the number of animals that, that Longview brought to the shelter, there was some concern, question from the Humane Society that what we were paying cost per animal versus some of the other cities was, was way lower than, but was that just strictly based on the volume of animals that were being brought to the shelter or?
Well, it was lower per animal. It still made up about 50% of their budget, overall operating budget. And that also happens to be about the same number of animals that we brought in, about 50%. But when you looked at the numbers overall, yes, it was significantly less per animal.
Okay. So with, with renewing the contract and with this 23% increase, what, what does that cost per animal? I mean, I'm sure that, that, is that what's driving the 23% increase?
We would have to ask them what their reasoning was as far as the additional cost. But I will tell you, yes, if the numbers hold true for the next coming 12 months compared to other years, that will bring our, our average up to closer to, I believe, $45 to $46 per animal, which is still a very low rate, in my opinion.
And I know Hall's sitting over there and he's still saying, "You probably can't board," I, I know what it costs me when I take my, my dog to board. So, so it's, it's still about a $45 boarding fee, basically, per animal.
If you compare this to something I'm a little more comfortable with, in previous years, I have brought what I thought would be a possible cost for sheltering done by the city of Longview. This is still approximately $75,000 less than what I was saying it would cost the city of Longview just to do it for the city of Longview. Not talking about doing services for Gregg County or any other city. Again, I was looking at around $275,000 was my estimate then.
Okay. Question, when we received the letter from the Humane Society regarding the increase and also being notified that within two years that they would no longer be accepting our animals at the shelters, I mean, the letter.
Yes, sir. That, that was about June 4th.
Right. And we discussed, staff discussed, looking at other options.
Yes, sir.
Of if we determined that, that we didn't want to renew the contract, but that we would pursue another, another place, if you will, another contract to bring our animals to. And, and what was the finding of staff?
Quite frankly, that we didn't find any locations that were reasonable in distance that would be willing to take our animals. We did hear from Nacogdoches, from their city management office down there. They seemed to be willing to negotiate. Nacogdoches is about an hour away one way. And again, the, the price was never considered. But talking to Henderson and Marshall and other closer locations, they weren't even willing to give us a price. Quite frankly, they didn't want to offer that service to us.
Okay. So as an option, I guess, and then counsel turn to you, but, but our options, basically, the two opt, or three options. One, renew the contract.
Yes, sir.
Two is, we have out at the fairground, a building that during some of the hurricanes, I know last year with the fires, we had some animals come in, horses or donkeys, goats, I mean, just animals come in. And, and I know during some of the hurricane events or whatnot, maybe some animals were brought into there.
Yes, sir.
But that, that would be an option to set up a temporary shelter. But it's a very temporary building. And if you look at it, part of the, front part of the building is dirt floored and not exactly sure that the animals would be in much better shape than, than they are right now with, with the animal shelter.
And Mayor, I do have a picture or two, if you would like to see those, of that particular operation. That one of the hidden costs with doing that temporary, what we call an emergency animal shelter that we've done in past hurricane operations, our code enforcement office basically shuts down in order to run those emergency animal shelter operations that we've done when we've had evacuees from Katrina and Gustav and Ike bring their pet animals up here. So if we do that, the, the biggest hidden cost that I have there is, I've got to use all the personnel really from our code enforcement office to do that operation. That, I don't think that's been considered very much. Again, could we do that? Yes. That would only be for the city of Longview animals. We couldn't offer that to Gregg County, we couldn't offer that to the other cities.
What, what would, okay, so if you took all of your code enforcement and put them into the animal shelter to run the shelter, what, what would that actually cost the city or cost the taxpayer? I mean, what is the payroll?
Honestly, I have not looked at that. I could do that rather quickly if you would like me to, but it's going to take me a good 15 minutes to pull that information for you.
Okay. Well, I think, you know, I, I think that's something reasonable to know, but I'm gonna, council questions? Go ahead, Mr. Frost.
This building we're talking about is where they have the farmer's market?
Yes, sir. It's the, the Ag Pavilion. Josh, could you look and see if there is one that is called, there you go.
There you go.
This is it, exactly.
Well, now, it's open and so wintertime comes, it gets cold and you have those animals in there or?
It's very cold and it's very hot in the summer.
Very hot in the summertime.
Yes. So it is an open-sided, you can see here, this is when we had some Gustav, the evacuees with us. We used large fans to cool it off because again, it was, it was rather hot and humid at that point. It's still hot. We haven't operated during the cold period of time, but I could only imagine it's just as cold then.
So we, we do this and then task force takes whatever time they take to come up with something and we, whatever we're gonna, how we're gonna pay for it, we have to go through that. So we're talking about at least a year.
Yes, sir. Depending on what the, what the recommendation is.
18 months' time you finish a, a facility. So this thing be tied up 18 months?
Probably so.
Okay.
The big problem is the staff in it.
And staff.
Richard, did you, I'm sorry, did you have something, Richard?
I do.
Go ahead.
Apologize for putting you on the spot.
That's okay.
There's been a couple of questions or, or suggestions that we go to a month-to-month contract rather than a one-year contract. As I read this, though it's a one-year contract, there's a 30-day out clause for either party, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
So this really is effectively a 30-day contract?
It could be considered that way, yes, sir. But you could certainly view it that way. There is a clause, so that everybody understands what we're talking about, there is a clause within the contract that's being proposed that every 30, within 30 days, either party could cancel the contract. You could consider it a 30-day contract.
Obviously, the intent is that it's a one-year contract.
Yes, sir.
I mean, you can't.
As I read this, though it's a one-year contract, there's a 30-day out clause for either party, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
So this really is effectively a 30-day contract. If I was signing a contract in my business.
You could certainly view it that way. Uh, it, there is a clause, so that everybody understands what we're talking about, there is a clause within the contract that's being proposed that every 30, within 30 days, either party could cancel the contract. You could consider it a 30-day contract.
Obviously, the intent is that it's a one-year contract.
Yes, sir.
I mean, you can't, you can't run a business on a 30-day cycle. I'm sure the Humane Society folks need to, uh, have a reasonable expectation that we're committed to them at least for a year so they can hire the people and everything else. But, but again, you've answered my question, it is effectively 30 days with notice if we change.
One small caveat, I do not believe our current contract would allow us to extend 30 days without a renewal. In other words.
Okay.
Without the renewal, I don't think we could extend the current contract that we're operating under for any additional time.
Got it. So we need a new contract, what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Questions? Okay, Ms. Allen? Hang on, so we got Ms. Allen and then, okay, did you have anything, did you have anything casual? Okay, then we'll come back over here.
The way, the way I understand, uh, this is a, just to make sure, it's a 12-month contract starting out?
Yes, sir.
With an option to, um, cancel it with 30-day notice by either party?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I've, I've visited a couple of times previously with, with Ms. Highcamp when she was talking about her lawsuit and, and the, uh, the situation then was what's gonna happen down the road? We really didn't know what, what, what we were gonna get into. I mean, everybody is considering this, it's been on all of our minds, we've been talking about it, we've been considering it, but we really didn't know, we didn't have a deadline. We didn't have something we were looking at. With the letter that we've received from the Humane Society now, we have a deadline. We, we know that within maximum of 24 months, that something has to be done. So really, in a way, this is good because it gave us a time schedule that we've got to meet. Now, uh, looking back, I know there have been several attempts by different organizations to talk about building a new facility. I don't think there's any doubt in our mind up here tonight that we need a new facility. The physical facility would just not handle a complete operation that, that it has been and there's been several successful fundraisers, but this is a lot of money and I don't know what they're talking about, you know, we could be talking about two million, three million, four million dollars. This is not a, a small amount of money. This is something that, that we're gonna have to look at very seriously. Of course, the easy way to do it would be if we have a, a fundraiser out there and they come up with a $4 million and then they go out and hire people to operate it. I mean, that would be the, uh, you know, the simple way to do, to do the whole thing. I guess if you're wishing for something, that's what we can wish for. But, uh, it's, uh, we have talked about a, is a center now, it's, you can pretty well say it's a county-wide operation that's going, or it is a county-wide operation that's going on out there now. And, uh, these people that are depending on us around the county to, to take their animals are gonna continue to depend on us. I think we have to look at a county-wide operation. And, uh, so we're gonna, we're gonna have to have a new facility. I think the question is, it's inevitable, who pays for it? And the next question is, who operates it? And, uh, that's, that seems to be, we hope that comes out of the, uh, the group that the mayor appointed. Personally, I have visited with several of the personnel that are now employed and they seem devoted people and they seem very interested in continuing what they are doing. Uh, my, my wife has worked out there, not recently, my wife has volunteered, we've taken a couple of animals that we've held that have been transported to other areas. So it's definitely something that the, uh, community needs and we have a deadline and I think with Mr. Dean's leadership, Mayor Dean and the other committee, that, uh, this is something we can work through. We just, we can't lay the plan out right now, or at least I can't sit here tonight and say this is step one, step two, or step three. But we, but we know where we've got to be 24 months from now.
Right. Thank you, Cindy. Mr., Simmons, you had something?
Yeah, uh, this has been, uh, as you know, it's been a long time coming, but, um, tonight I have hope. Uh, I know we're gonna vote on this new contract here in a little while and probably everyone on the council is gonna vote for it except me, and that's fine. All I'm interested in at this time is, of course, you appointed the task force and there are some very good knowledgeable people on that. And, uh, I think we're gonna arrive at a solution. Uh, I've heard comments tonight by council members that we do need a new facility and this I hadn't heard before. Uh, so I think everybody knows that we do have to have a new facility. Uh, I've been told that the facility, present facility is, uh, contaminated and can never be recovered and I believe that because a doctor told me. Uh, so finally, finally, I feel good about the direction we're going in. I thank you for appointing that task force and, uh, I, I can't vote for, for, for renewing the contract, that's just a personal preference, uh, and, uh, it doesn't mean that, uh, I don't think we can all work together. Uh, I would like to point out on a temporary, I, I have heard, uh, uh, from Kevin and, and from the manager, they were looking around for other buildings instead of the fairgrounds. And, uh, I hope that you will direct them to, to try to, um, if we can get a temporary building until the permanent structure, if, I think as soon as we can get those, uh, animals out of Enterprise Street, the better off we'll be. And, uh, I would appreciate if you will ask the manager and, and, uh, Mr. Cummings to continue to try to locate, uh, what we would term of, uh, temporary shelter.
I will, um, def, John, I agree and, and, uh, e- even long-term, uh, as the process works, we, we should be considering for other purposes in this whole process. I, I think we're here tonight, though, as far as a temporary building, I, I think finding maybe a building that the city has that could be made to work, but it's the staffing, okay? If you're gonna, if you're gonna, you know, you can't enforce your codes and be an animal shelter business and do both, okay? And, and we don't have in our budget the ability to turn around and rehire either replacements for code enforcement or people to, you know, run the, the shelter. So, um, that's, that's kinda where we are. Hang on just one second, I had, I had missed the cross.
One question.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Uh, on, on the new, uh, contract, the cost?
Yes, sir.
Do you, do we get a breakdown of what all the costs were? Detail breakdown?
Uh, no, sir, we didn't. Uh, the, the costs pretty much came to us in the form that you saw, um, and we did not.
I think typically it's based on the, on the num, per animal cost is what, is what we went through the last two years. Richard, you had something?
Yeah.
I was gonna say this, but I, I think, I've heard a couple of people speak tonight and I know we're going to continue to consider the task force and I, and I'm not trying to get in front of the task force. I wanna, I wanna caution us to be implying by some of the things we're saying from the council here, that we see this as a totally city responsibility here. Um, some of the things could be inferred that way by people as they listen. And, um, I know the mayor's intent all along has been for the city to partner with the charities and, uh, volunteers in this city that want to protect the animals. And while I, I appreciate the fact that we're gonna look for a building that may be the right building for such a partnership, and while I agree that some of our fellow communities may depend upon us, it's therefore not our responsibility to take animals for floodwater or surrounding communities just because the Humane Society is doing it today. So I just wanted to, to say before it gets in the paper or people watch us on TV tonight and here are some of the things that have been said, that somehow we've morphed from where we started out with this partnership and a task force that's gonna look at all the options into some of the things that have been said tonight. So I just wanted to get on the record.
Well, good, good point and the, I, I went to the first meeting and I assured the task force that I would not be there at every meeting and let them, let them do their job. And, and some of the things you just talked about has already been brought up, okay? I mean, this, this.